Good afternoon and welcome to the October 18 meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission. I believe we have a quorum present for today's meeting. And first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the September 20 meeting. Any comments, changes, amendments?
I make a motion we approve as submitted.
Second. David Becker has made a motion and we have two seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Minutes are approved. Robert, if you would introduce the first item, please.
Okay Chairman Cantrell. Excuse me. Our first item on the agenda is 933 East Main Street. The applicants are Mr. and Mrs. Kent Coleman. They're requesting to construct a new driveway off of East Main Street. And they also want to demolish the existing carport and construct a new carport that fronts on Cherry Lane. And then they're going to add an arbor and a fountain and two porches behind the rear of the house. This property is located, let me get this straight here, at the corner of East Main Street and Cherry Lane. The house is constructed in 1948 in the colonial revival style of architecture. It's a two-story brick house with a classical porch, side dependencies, and a gable roof. This house is a non-contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. What they're wanting to do, if you can refer to the board here, or we have a picture on the monitor, is the site plan of the property. And you can see where they're going to come in with a single drive fronting on Main Street. And they're going to circle it around to have a formal entrance to the front of the house. It's going to loop around. The gravel, the driveway is going to be consisting of pea gravel. It'll be landscaped according to the site plan as we see. In addition to this driveway, they're going to have a front entry. It's going to be stone, you can see the stone entryway into the house. And along the side of the house, or the side view of fronting on Cherry Lane, they're going to construct a carport. And I should talk about the carport that's existing now. It's been, it's also there behind the house, fronting on East Main Street. And I think it was part of the house when it was originally constructed. They would like to demolish it and put in a larger carport that's actually a lot closer to Cherry Lane. They had to secure some variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I included a letter in your agenda package with all the variances that were required of them. They recently received those variances at the September 29 Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. And this will allow them at least to locate a structure that's closer to the street and the setbacks than our zoning ordinance actually allows. They're coming before the commission today with the drawings of the structure of the carport. And the board, that you can see on the, in front of you, it details the two elevations of the carport. I think it'll have a copper roof, according to Mr. Coleman. It's going to have a cupola on top. And the brick, it's going to have brick base with columns that are going to be brick also. In the style, the type roof, it'll be similar to, it'll be the same as the house on East Main Street. They're also proposing to build two terraces that'll be located right behind the house. And it'll be separated by an arbor. You can tell from the, from the site plan, the two stone terraces, one into the house and one other one's toward the middle of the house. And it's going to be separated with the arbor. And they're also going to include a brick seat wall with crab orchard stone, with a crab orchard stone cap. They're going to include a fountain, I think, right close to the carport. I included several pictures and drawings in your agenda package. And if you have any questions, I'll be able to answer. And Mr. Coleman's here also for questions.
Any questions of the staff at this time? Would the applicant like to address his request?
Yes Chairman. One correction, I told Mr. Lewis that the roof would be copper. And I think we have got some drawings from the architect today that would show it to be the same asphalt shingle roof as the current house. And I've got some drawings that will help you with questions.
Okay. Yeah.
So Mr. Coleman, you're going to change the roof material to an asphalt shingle rather than the copper? Is that correct?
That's correct. And actually, the architect did that, not me, though I didn't have any problem with it. Basically, the whole plan came about when we lost some trees in the front yard with the storm last spring. And we were looking to redo the landscape plan. And the landscape architect came up with suggestions for the front and the backyard. Currently, we have a large driveway, which basically is our backyard. We have gone to BZA and requested that the carport be relocated closer to Cherry Lane, which will allow some landscaping and some privacy in the backyard. The water feature that is located on the schematic drawing of the landscaping actually would not be visible from the street or any of the sightlines because it backs up to the carport wall. And the two terraces are actually patios, which will be crab orchard. I have included in the handout kind of an example, which we've been given, it's not the final example, but it's an example of what the arbor would be like, which would connect the back patio in the backyard with a smaller patio that's by the kitchen. And actually, those items would not be very visible from the sightlines of the street either. We are wanting to open up the front yard to kind of feature the house from Main Street instead of from Cherry Lane. We would like to do that by having this circular drive, which is shown on the drawing. And it would have a rock border around it and then the pea gravel, or whatever you call that type of gravel. And I presume we would use some type of binding to try to make it not all flow out into the street or have ruts, but it would be, it would have loose gravel in it also.
Okay.
I'd be glad to answer any questions. You might have.
Any questions of the applicant from the commission?
Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Kent, this reminds me of the extreme makeover that's on TV these days. But this is, you know, quite an elaborate plan and it really looks great. We have sort of, as a commission, been not real crazy about circular driveways, but the depth of your property. I myself don't have a particular problem, but I am want to encourage you to follow your landscape plan, which will diminish the noticeably of the driveway itself. So I would expect that this landscape plan will be complete when your project's complete.
Yes, we intend to kind of do it as one project now. Whether it's easier to put in the driveway so that we could have some availability to park while we're doing the construction in the rear. But the sprinkler system, the smaller landscaping would all be done at once. I think we'll probably plant some trees, which we hope will grow to be larger trees, is the first thing we'll do. Because we hope to do that in November. But as far as the construction of the project, I don't know if the weather will have an effect on, you know, if it gets too cold, whether that has an effect on anything we want to do. But, you know, we intend to do the whole project as one item.
I think the hedge in front of your cars and your walkway there is especially important. The last question I have is on the carport.
The carport, yes.
The material, what material is on the non-brick extension there, which would be, as I'm looking to this drawing to the right of the carport?
Would you prefer it be wood?
Wood or hardy board or anything like that would be fine.
Either one of those is fine with me. I don't have a problem with either one.
Okay. When the decision is made on what material you're going to use there, would you let Robert know?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
If, yeah, I think it's intended to be wood, but I don't, I don't have a problem with either one of those two materials. And it could be a common, I don't know if they combined those materials anyway, but I'll certainly let Mr. Lewis know.
It says wood.
Well, your application stated wood, but that's fine. I understand what you're saying. There may be some other, I think the main thing is it's not going to be a vinyl siding material is probably where you're headed.
That's correct.
Okay.
I have one other question.
Yes.
Kent, I wondered about the cupola on top of your new garage.
Yes.
I was wondering what your reasoning was for that.
The original drawing, we basically not had any major input, me or my wife. We've left it up to the architect. And the architect came up with that and then the landscape architect did. Then the, they would have subbed out the actual drawing of the carport to another architect and they put it on there. I like it, but I don't.
I just, in looking at your house, that style is totally different from your house. And in driving around your neighborhood, I didn't see any others with that cupola accent. I just wondered if that was something you decided on.
It is not.
For sure. I think, and I think now that you're putting asphalt shingles on, I think you're going to be happy with that. And maybe you could think about not having that cupola. I don't know that it adds anything to the house.
You know, it's one of those situations, I don't have any problem with what you're I just kind of took it from the person that drew it and I didn't have a problem with what they did either. So I don't know whether it's got any lighting in it, that, you know, any small amount of light that comes out that's part of the feature or not.
Okay.
I've not talked in detail with the architect.
You might want to look into that and see what his reasoning is for that. Like it, I don't know. If you look around your neighborhood, I don't think you'll spot anything else like that. So I don't think he was trying to tie it in to some of the other architectural features.
You know, I don't have a problem with, if you don't want it there, we can.
I mean, I think that's a personal thing, but I was just curious about the design.
We'll ask him, see if there's, you know, if you've got any other money-cutting ideas right away. No, we'll ask him. I don't know, I have looked around and I don't know a cupola other than the courthouse. And I don't think he was trying to match the courthouse.
I share David's concern about the number of circular drives that we're seeing in We sort of opened that door and it's hard to close it. And at the same time, this house, because of its architecture, can stand what the designers and the owners are proposing to do, I think, without any problem with the landscaping package that's with it. I completely understand why they would like to have a backyard, looking at the existing situation. And I think this is a, it is a reasonable and attractive approach to this. It's just that I think that as a commission, we have, we're opening, we're creating an entrance onto East Main Street that doesn't exist. That's one thing. And while I have no objection to this because the plan is so good and the landscaping is done so well, I do have a concern, an ongoing concern about we keep, the fact that we continue to get these applications and we're altering the nature of East Main Street when we do it. And I think that what we have to do is keep in mind the fact that it is a result of the quality of the plan and of the investment in the landscape that's being done that makes this decision one that you can support and that we're going to have to insist on a level as high as this with future applications or we're going to be inundated with them. But this is very thoughtful. And I think that our approval should be one of this plan in its entirety. It's got to be completed. And I have no doubt that these owners will do that. But I think that we should probably state that in the approval, that if we approve it, that it, that it's conditioned on all of the landscaping being done as shown, so that we don't wind up with a situation where it's, as Joseph A. Lotte would say, bait and switch. If that makes any sense.
I think he did a good job, Mr. Cross, of explaining that. It is an integral part of his overall plan and that he's trying to open up the backyard and at the same time provide himself with some additional parking on the property. He's probably, at one point, looked at coming off of Cherry Lane, which would probably be more of a distraction than making the additional drive off of Main Street. And then, of course, he has the depth back to the house that easily accommodates that. Any other comments? Is there anyone here to speak for or against the request? Does the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of this request based on reconsideration of the cupola, not as a condition, but as something that you'll consider. And the landscape plan being completed exactly as shown on the drawings that are presented to us.
Second. Okay. So basically, the motion made by Mr. Cross is to approve the request as presented with the option of deleting or maintaining the cupolas presented and using the asphalt shingles. Is that correct? And it's been seconded? Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise?
Thank you.
Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, if you would introduce the second one? Thank you.
All right. The next one is, the address is 521 East Main Street. The applicants are Robert and Elizabeth Bray. They're likewise requesting to demolish an existing carport and they're going to construct a new detached garage that'll have a covered balcony, excuse me, attached to the carport. They, the property is located on the north side of East Main Street midway between North Highland and North University Street. The house is constructed in 1915 in the four-square style of architecture with arts and crafts detailing and a central dormer. It's a two-story house with brick veneer and hip roof. It is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. What they're wanting to do is remove the existing carport behind the house and construct a new detached garage that will include a hobby and exercise room with a second floor. Likewise, they also had to attend the Board of Zoning Appeals and grant, receive variances for their property. And I included a letter in your agenda package, which outlines all those variances. And they were granted approval for those variances. One condition, I think, that was part of the Board of Zoning Appeals approval was for a surveyor to help lay out the footing of the garage and certify that the garage will meet all the setbacks. And the project should be, the project should be compliant with a maximum lot coverage and the coverage of the required rear yard. It's a little, it's kind of close, so they're going to, a surveyor should certify that as part of the building permit also. The materials for the carport, for the detached garage supplied by the designer, they're calling hardy plank siding for the covering of the structure. The garage door will be a three-piece steel insulated door. And samples of the lighting is included in your agenda package along with the entry doors. The windows will be a double-hung clad window. The columns, if we could have a picture of the drawing that shows the detached garage on the monitor, it'll show that the columns and the rails, the porch, and the vent and the trim will all be wood. I've also included, whoops, I guess I should do this. My technical difficulties here. I'm getting updated here. There we go. It's not the one I want. There we go. If we can have this picture on the monitor, it shows the double doors with the windows and the vents. And this is the front view fronting the driveway. The roof material will be asphalt shingles. And the applicants or in the audience, either them or I will be able to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of the staff at this time from the commission? Would the applicant like to elaborate just a little bit with the request? Mr. James going to represent the applicant?
Just like to add, the only thing that's probably going to be changed somewhat is the site plan. I don't know if y'all even expect y'all, the site plan was, we were showing it seven feet. We're actually going to move it back to the five-foot setback, which allowed to give us a little more room for the turnaround in front of the garage.
Okay, Mr. James.
I'd be glad to answer any other questions that you might have.
So the existing garage location, this new garage will be setback further on the property than.
The existing carport's going to be demolished because it is over the setback.
Right.
So we're put it to the existing, to the original, I mean, back to the lab setback.
Okay.
It could be five foot on each side and five foot at the rear.
Okay.
And our site plan shows it at seven, but we're going to move it back to the five to gain a little more turnaround space.
Is that the same location as the current carport?
No.
Okay.
The current carport is on the side, is actually on the side block.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
What's the age of the existing garage?
Excuse me?
The age of the existing carport?
I talked to, the garage was built by Marvin Rye, he added, it was in the late 70s. And it's pretty deteriorated.
And how much larger will the footprint of the new garage be than the existing carport?
The existing carport, I believe, was right 600. The new footprint's going to be about 800.
I was curious as to the height of the house compared to the height of the garage. The height of the garage is 28 feet, according to the drawing. Do you know what the height of the house is?
Considerably more because it has, what, the ceiling height's 10, 12 feet. And so it's, the house is considerably more. We didn't measure.
Are you going to be living out there? Looks like a nice place to live.
I have some concern about this. The size of the new carport, or new garage, in my view, is totally out of proportion with anything that I've ever seen that relates to this style of house. This is a contributing structure in the National Register District. Based on my experience as an administrator of that program, if this were a freestanding building on the National Register and you built a garage that size that was visible, there's a good chance that they would take it off the National Register. I'm not prepared to, I would want to see a representation that would show this proposed garage relative to the house. And that's just my opinion. And I'm certainly not picking on Mr. James. I have a great deal of respect for him personally and professionally. But this is just, I think we're, this is, this is a monumental garage. And I'm not going to vote in favor of it until I've had an opportunity to at least see a representation of what it would look like next to that house. I think it's, I think it's an awfully big appendage to put that we're going to see from East Main Street adjacent to what is a really nice four-square house. And I don't know that it's in keeping with the standards that we have. And I'm. And I may be the only one that feels that way, but that's a concern that I have. I don't want to be inundated now with a rash of applications of people wanting to build two-story garages beside their historic houses. So that's my opinion. I'm one person.
All I can say with that reply, again, I can understand your concern. We didn't address this in relation to the existing house because it is so much smaller than the existing house. And also, the distance from the road, the original house is 65 feet from the road. The garage is approximately 200 feet from the road. So there's quite a bit of difference between the street of the house and the street where the new structure will be. And like I say, the existing structure there is approximately almost, well, similar in size. And I know it's one-story versus two-story, but square footage of the footprint is basically the same.
Let me ask this. You show that the new garage is going to be 28 feet, and I have trouble visualizing, like, about how tall is the garage that's there now, to the tip of the, I mean, to the top of the roof?
We've got an eight-foot floor above pretty much what's there, so we're about eight foot taller.
So just eight feet?
Yeah.
Is all you're talking about?
In other words, the existing ceiling of the garage now is where our existing ceiling will the new garage will be. So we're going above it with a two-story structure, which is basically about eight feet.
And I'm well aware, too, of the very, very tall, they've got very tall houses on both sides of them. And I believe, like you say, and I see it every single day, you barely, the garage is backed so far and wedged in there between these other big, tall houses. You barely notice it.
Yeah, it's just.
And I think that's the way, you know, they want it.
It's a trim it into the property, no matter.
Are there any other comments?
I was just wondering, Mr. James, was there any discussion of a story and a half? Would that allow enough room upstairs to have the?
The original design, the intent was to try to get a lot of hobby rooms for her hobby and exercise room, and it couldn't be done. And keeping the low pitch of the existing, trying to match the house, the original pitch of the house, which is fairly low, and it gives us no room for a story and a half structure.
And also, Mr. James, if you had to knock the existing garage down to build this two-story, would you have to trim any of these trees around here?
I don't know. It shouldn't be, the property itself wouldn't have any problem with the trees. Now, the neighbors' trees shouldn't be an issue anymore.
Okay.
Again, what you're seeing, that existing carport is on the property line. There is no setback. We're actually moving it to your left, basically five feet. So that should take it out of play with the trees.
Okay. Robert, did the commission approve a two-story detached structure on College or Lidl in the past few years?
Well, there was one approved on Main Street.
Okay.
Hale's property. There was a detached garage.
My recollection is that that sat more directly behind the house.
Okay.
Maybe not totally, but a little more directly behind the house.
I think I'm recalling one that we actually went out and made a site visit to.
And there have been others, I believe, not many, but I believe there have been one or two others that set back a ways that were approved.
You talking about two-story or a story and a half? Something larger than one-story?
Obviously, I don't remember it very well, but.
Well, the Swaffords.
Yeah.
The Swaffords.
Swaffords had a, and that's on East Main, next to the church.
The footage number that you threw out, that 600 on the base and the 800, is that under roof? Did that include the stairwell?
I just remembered the footprint from the variances we requested. I've got that information, technically, I think I brought with me. And all I have with me is the approval from the zoning request. But the 800 square foot, that is the footprint.
Okay. So what's the depth of the new structure?
Wait, did I put that back up? It's approximately 30 feet.
Okay. Yes, because if you looked at the left.
Thirty-six feet.
Thirty-six feet?
Thirty-six.
It's 24 feet by 36 feet, the main structure, then it's got an eight-foot covered balcony.
Yeah, it looks like you did try to emulate the roofline on the existing house with the new structure as proposed. I think that's one of the concerns that we had on the house before with an accessory structure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to this. We have the authority to request drawings or illustrations that are sufficient for us to make a decision. This is not sufficient for me to make a decision. And I'll be glad to give you a motion asking for a deferral with a specific request to provide us with an illustration that would help us visualize the impact of the structure. I don't particularly have a problem with the design of the proposed building. I just am not comfortable with what I have in front of me to make a decision. So that's, that's where I am. I'm just, I'm just telling you now.
So you'd like an elevation?
I'd like to see an elevation that could, that, and with the computer, it's, I know Steve can pull it off. And I'm not lobbying for extra work for Mr. Seack.
Again, this is something we can do. I'd be glad to do it. We can actually put the existing house, existing tree, and show the new structure, which we've done in the past. We did several projects on Main Street we've done before. Again, the reason we didn't include this this time, with the depth of the property and where the garage was, it really didn't, it's such a distance, it didn't come into play. But we'll be glad to do that. I would like to say that, I know you were mentioning, Paul, about doing it with, delaying it to another month. We have been working on this project since July, going through all the variances, requests, and all that stuff. So we're way behind on schedule in meeting the deadlines to get to each meeting. So if we postpone another month, we're looking at possibly another year.
That was going to be my question. When are they looking at starting the project?
Well, they're looking at August.
Yesterday, huh?
So, I mean, it's just trying to meet the meetings, the deadlines, and just say we're delayed. So, you know, and I'm not opposed to do it. If that's what we have to do, we'll do it. But it's just that it's going to postpone us, start anyway a little longer. And we can get the drawings to you if we just want to see it. You know, maybe I can get them to you, you know, a few days or a week.
I don't know what the procedure is, but I would like to make a motion to approve as they have asked.
Well, you have a motion that's been made to approve the request. Is there a second?
Well, we also had a motion.
Well, that's what I wondered.
I don't believe that was stated. It could be, but.
Was not stated as a motion. I'm just letting you know that I had an alternative to continue consideration of it based on its merits with the addition of a little bit more information.
With that said, you still have your motion?
Yes.
We have a.
I have one question before we go further on the motion. And I know we're, you know, I'm sort of struggling with the visualization as also, Mr. James, can you give us an estimate of how much of this garage we'll see as we look down the driveway? I would imagine for sure the stairway's going to be behind the house.
How much you will actually see from the driveway?
Yeah, will we see bay one or we see a bay and a half? How much of this garage do you think we'll see?
You'll see one bay and that's about it.
Okay.
We're moving over. If you look at the site plan, it's straight lines, nothing parallel. Oh, do you have a site plan?
Yes, we do.
If you take a visual line from the street, you'll approximately see, you're looking at basically one bay door.
Okay. You'll see this.
I have a picture of the site plan. We could pull it up there. It's a little bit small.
Do you have a, a pic, do you have this also that you could put on the screen?
Yeah.
Mr. James, what would you estimate the roofline to strike in relation to the house of this proposed structure?
The proposed structure, probably three-quarters way up the second floor windows.
Could you say that again?
Approximately three-quarters of the distance up the second floor windows.
Of the window or to the window?
Well, the second floor window's approximately one-third down from the top of that window.
Yeah. Somewhere around there.
Okay.
Because as you can visualize from your carport, we're basically going eight foot plus the roof structure, so that's going to put approximately a third in those windows.
That's the top of the roof.
Are you saying the top of the roof? Or, you know, you're saying at the window level?
The window and the second floor windows.
Yeah.
Approximately one-third from the corners line down.
Is that the window that's facing the street or the window that's perpendicular?
Facing the street.
Okay.
And that's the top of the roof, the top of the, is it a hip roof?
Well, it's a low-pitched roof and we've got the same roof pitch.
Just the V. Roof's dark.
He's saying a third of the way down.
Okay, we have a motion and do we have a second? Okay. Motion fails for lack of a second. Is there a subsequent motion?
I move that we ask Mr. James to provide us with an elevation that depicts the relationship of the proposed garage to the existing house and that we act on the request after that's been provided to us.
So you have a, another motion that's been made to ask for additional information by Mr. Kraus. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second? All those in favor of that motion came to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No?
No.
No?
No.
Motion fails. Is there another motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion, you know, they have put a lot of time and effort in this, and I hate to see them walk away without us approving this. We can approve based on renditions of the new drawing and go ahead and put that motion into place. Once he gets the drawings done, he can come back to you, Mr. Chairman, or Robert, and to set everything in play before we can move on to the next step. Could we do that?
Well, let me just ask, I mean, I would have no problem coming back next Tuesday afternoon if he can, Mr. James can have the rendering available for us.
That's fine.
Absolutely, for me also.
I just, I just think, why delay it when we don't have?
That's fine, and I'm not suggesting that we delay it a month.
Okay, all right, that's my motion.
And what was that motion, please, again? That we have the information back available for a meeting?
Yes.
To be, so we will not close this meeting today, but continue it until Tuesday of next week?
If we're going to have a special meeting, we have time to put it in the newspaper if we do that. I believe we can get that done and then have the meeting. If it runs in Sunday's paper, if we put it in the paper tomorrow, we should have time to get it in for a meeting on next Tuesday.
We would just have it as a special meeting then, rather than trying to continue this meeting.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Robert, would you introduce the third request, please?
Thank you, Chairman Cantrell. Our next item is 148 Cherry Lane. The applicants are Greg and Tammy Waldron. They're requesting to demolish an existing carport, and then they're going to construct a new detached building behind the house to be used as a hobby and a workspace with a second-floor storage. And they're also requesting to alter the front elevation of the house at the front-door This property is located on Cherry Lane. Let's see if I can get to this. On the east side of East Main, of East, on the east side of Cherry Lane. Oh, army. On the east side of Cherry Lane near Lidl Street. The house was constructed in 1947, and it can be characterized as a post-World War II minimal traditional style of architecture. The house is a one-story with brick veneer and a gable roof. The house is not located in either the East Main Street Historic District of National Register of Historic Places or the Manny Avenue Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. But it is in the local historic zone, so that's why it's coming before us. The property owners, they're proposing to demolish their existing carport due to some termite damage, and they want to replace it with a detached structure. The, I have some elevations and some pictures in your agenda package that depict the location and the style of architecture. In addition, they also want to change the front elevation of the house by adding a gable roof over the current stoop and a gable addition to the existing roof line at the porch. The applicants also received variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I included a copy of the letter in your agenda package. The, let's see, the existing porch is approximately, the house, excuse me, the applicant's house, including the covered porch, is approximately 1,300 square feet in size. The new detached structure is approximately 587 square feet in size, bringing total to 1,890 square feet for the lot. According to the front elevation submitted by the applicant, the height of the current house is approximately 18 feet. And the new structure, let's see, same as, okay, the house and the detached structure is about the same height, which is approximately 18 feet. The new structure in the back will have a hardy plank material as exterior covering of the building, and it'll have a ribbon of brick as base foundation, which ties back into the. into the brick of the residence. The garage door is composed of T, I think it's 111 wood exterior MDF, and also will be the columns and the trim material. The gate, which is going to be in between the house and the building, will be made of cypress wood. The front elevation of the house is proposed to be altered by adding a gable roof over the stoop, and the drawings included in your package depict this. I've also included adjacent property owners on both sides to get a look of adjacent property I believe I said that the columns on the porch, are they going to be, are they going to be wood also?
Have the exterior wood.
Okay, MDF, okay. The property owners are in attendance at the, in the audience, and they'll be able to answer your questions that you may have.
Any questions on the staff?
I had two questions.
All right.
In the elevation, it's hard to tell the setback of your proposed garage. And from the site plan, that answers my question, I guess, but, so the new structure is going to be, is basically going to start at the back of your house, right? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other, the other thing that I'm very concerned about, we've been going through this today with another applicant, is that I'm wondering, even though it's going to be towards the back, if by any chance a new structure turned out to be higher than your existing house, I think that would not be good.
Yeah, we have measured the ridge line of the existing house, and the design of the new is, I think we even had to adjust the pitch some to make sure that we do not exceed the ridge of the existing structure. The new ridge line of the addition will not exceed the ridge line of the existing structure.
Any other?
With the, the front elevation of the existing structure with the change that we're proposing to do, we kind of batted around different ideas of what to do, and what we finally decided on was trying to maintain that traditional, minimal traditional, I think maybe it was the way Robert put it, which that's about what it is with just a straight gable roof now. Instead of trying to make it into like a cottage look, so we were trying to just keep it very traditional in that manner.
I can certainly see why you'd want to have a gable over your, your front stoop, because you just walk right out into the monuments, don't you?
Yes, it's just a straight gable, no, there's no stoop or accent gable or anything at this point.
Any other questions or comments regarding this application?
One thing that I forgot to mention at the Board of Zoning Appeals, I think that was talked about, the detached structure in the back and its relation to the Murfreesboro Electric Lines. Have you had any contact with MED about this?
We, prior to the BZA meeting, we did make contact with Murfreesboro Electric, and the line, there's a secondary vault that is behind our lot, that's on Mr. Freeman's property behind us, that runs down the joining rear property lines of most people down through Cherry Lane. Most people on Cherry Lane and Park Circle, their power comes from the rear of the lot. And they came out and took a look at that. Their only concern was the underground service from the secondary vault to our meter base to make sure that we don't build over top of that. And we told them, once we have everything staked, if we see that it's going to be under our new structure, we will be relocating that service line to our house.
Yeah, the survey doesn't depict that. If there's an easement or power pole on it, does it?
I don't recall that. The power pole is right, it hits about middle-way of the existing carport. It's right at the rear property line. There's a, where the three lots, my lot, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Cunningham's lot, come together. I think the only thing servicing off of that pole this time would be the cable and telephone.
Many other comments?
Greg, I'm sort of having the same problem we have with the previous application in trying to visualize what, how the new structure is going to look compared to your home now with its current, with where you have it set back, because this picture we have actually looks like it's even with your house, and we know that's not true. We know it's sitting way back by the back of your house. I'm sort of struggling to see how much of this structure we're going to see when we look down your carport. Well, as far as that, you know, looking at it, that's, from the street, that's what you'll be seeing. The other part, the covered patio area will be covered by the, blocked by the existing structure. And so, as you're, you know, this is basically, you'd be looking at it straight on at the property. But it's keeping in mind that as the new structure is going to be set back a little further, you know, it will appear to be not as tall, just by, as you would draw something in a perspective picture, would have the item in the background appear to be smaller than the item in the foreground.
I can see why you want to make this improvement to your property and make it more usable, and it's hard to have a patio under your carport that you've got right now.
Yeah.
As we can even see from the pictures, not much of a patio for you, is it?
Any other thoughts, comments?
I'm, personally, I'm good with this. I've got a representation that, I think it's, I think it's an improvement. It's an adequate document for us to make a decision, and I'm, in fact, I'll move to approve the applicant.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the request by Mr. Cross. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, from Ms. Anderson. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Robert, is there any other reports?
Chairman Cantrell, I don't have any other reports, other than you received a calendar, I think, in your agenda package for next year's meeting. And other than that, I will endeavor to get this newspaper ad for the special meeting for next Tuesday. Okay. I was asked to have you approve the calendar for next year. Can you, can you all approve the calendar?
One question about the time of day that the meeting next Tuesday might occur.
I usually try to set it up the same time, 3:30, if that's, you know.
What time does the Board of Zoning Appeals meet? Does that meet on that same day?
No, they meet on Wednesdays.
Wednesday? Okay. Is 3:30 going to be convenient for everybody?
Fine with me.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the calendar for next year?
Some, uh.
There's a motion to approve by Mr. Cross?
We did that last week, or last.
Well, we're reinstating it, so.
We're double-stamping that.
Because I moved, and you weren't here.
Okay.
I wasn't here.
Thank you.
Didn't you, didn't you ask us to approve?
I did, but I was told we already approved it.
Okay.
Yes.
Everybody needs somebody like that.
We must approve it every other week.
If that's all we have, then we'll stand adjourned.
I hope they do.
See y'all next Tuesday.
I'm there.